Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. If you would, please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Riska. Can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Rosky.
Here.
Mr. Majak.
Here.
Ms. Radke.
Present.
Ms. Schmidt.
Present.
Ms. Drianis.
Here.
Ms. Zarco.
Present.
Council, we need approval of the agenda.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
Move to approve the agenda.
Support.
I was gonna say as presented because Deanna always says.
Sorry.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
I'd like to move Consideration Item H, or sorry, Consent Agenda Item H to Consideration Item B.
Okay, we will take 7H from the consent agenda, make it Consideration Item 8B. Is there any other discussion?
No further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. First up on our agenda tonight is a report from our city manager, Mr. Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few items this evening. First, it's always an honor when we have one of our state legislators here to present the good work going on at the state level. As reported on previously, the city of Sterling Heights fared quite well in the recent budget that was approved by the state, and that includes millions more in road funding, a couple million dollars for a new ladder truck that we need to purchase that's already on order, and legislation, although not part of the budget, forthcoming legislation that will be beneficial to the Lakeside City Center project, and so on and so forth. So a lot of good stuff going on at the state level. And with us this evening is State Senator Michael Weber, who'd like to talk about some of the work that he is spearheading.
Thank you. Thank you so much, and stole some of my thunder there, but appreciate the help on that. And Mayor, council members, and congratulations on your elections and look forward to working with all of you here during your term. So, Michael Weber, I do serve as a state senator for the 9th District, which includes Sterling Heights, Shelby Township, Utica, greater Rochester area, and Troy, back for a fall legislative update. And when I was here last, we were talking about prospectively what could be in the state budget. Now, we did pass a state budget a few days behind schedule, but we got it done by October 3rd, and did not have any sort of shutdown similar to the federal government. So, our state budget, like families all over Michigan, the state government must live within its means, so I'm happy to support this strong bipartisan state budget that rolls back spending for the first time in years, helps workers by eliminating taxes on tips, overtime, and social security, and makes needed investments in our roads, particularly our local roads, by putting every penny paid in taxes at the pump back into fixing our infrastructure. So, you know, in terms of municipalities, mainly positive for Sterling Heights, it's a little bit mixed, though, on the revenue sharing, so I'll talk about that. In terms of roads, Sterling Heights will receive about a 31% increase in local road funding from the state for a total of over $21 million annually. Combe County will receive a 36% increase, or close to $31 million in additional money for county and local roads yearly. All told, the bipartisan roads plan will invest close to $2 billion in long-term road funding, and that is expected to increase over time on an annual basis. So, not a one-time thing, it's gonna be an annual thing. And the plan also dedicates, and is trying to tackle our backlog on bridge repair, so $100 million annually will be added to the local bridge program, which is vitally important for all of our communities. You know, on the minus side, revenue sharing did decrease, and that's because of getting rid of the sales tax on gas, and also to try to make room for the money for the $95 million for the Public Safety Trust Fund, of which we think Sterling Heights will tentatively receive over $200,000 roughly on that. And that Public Safety Trust Fund is for local public safety-focused programs with additional resources for law enforcement, prosecution, other public safety-related recruitment, retention, training, firefighting, equipment needs. In terms of revenue sharing, back to revenue sharing, we did, and I know Barb has been very focused on this when she was with MML as the chair, but we did reintroduce the revenue-sharing trust fund legislation in the Senate, so it's been in the House. We did have bipartisan introduction on that with Senator Moss and myself again this session, but then we also added Senator Cherry to the mix, who does a lot of the revenue-sharing stuff on the Senate Subcommittee on that. So, we're hoping to get that through, and I think if any time, I think now is the time to really do that, now that revenue sharing has dipped a little bit. Overall, a net positive for the city with the local funding and road funding and the Public Safety Trust Fund component, but, you know, I think it would probably have been best if we could have gotten all three the way we wanted to. And then, in terms of specific to Sterling Heights, you know, city manager Vanderpool talked about the $2.1 billion for the ladder truck, and we're very proud to have put that project forward for the city of Sterling Heights. And I understand it takes a little time to get those, so, you know, hopefully by 2030 or whatever, I don't know. I know Troy, it's on a backlog of a couple of years, but hopefully, you know, that's something that you guys can count on as you're putting together your needs there for public safety. Also, as I've mentioned in the past, I co-chair our Aerospace and Defense Caucus, and the caucus was able to secure the $26 million for Selfridge. That's gonna keep our infrastructure improvements on track in preparation for the new fighter-jet mission in 2028, and then also making sure that the Office of Defense and Aerospace Innovation is fully funded at the $5 million that they have been, which with some of the stuff going on with MEDC was certainly not a guarantee this year, and so we were able to, on a bipartisan basis, advocate for that funding, which will obviously help our defense and aerospace industry and help us attract companies here. Last but not least, I wanted to put on the council's radar and the public's radar, you know, the continued discussion I'm having in Lansing over the last three years about mental health, particularly for our kids and adults in psychiatric hospitals, state-run psychiatric hospitals. We did ask for an audit, an independent audit of our Office of Recipient Rights, and the audit came out and showed that our Michigan Department of Health and Human Services failing to protect our kids and adults when we receive mental health treatment. The audit found eight total findings, with four being material findings are the most severe. To give you an idea, one of my colleagues, who has done oversight for years, he says if there's like one finding, one material finding, usually that's a pretty big deal. So, we had a House Oversight Committee meeting in which they allowed me to come and testify about this, and had the Auditor General, and there was strong bipartisan support, obviously, to do something to kind of rectify this on our watch. It's on our watch. So, I'm working with my colleagues to fix our broken hospital system, and hopefully this audit will be the way to kind of springboard into that. So, and then for residents here and at home, for more information, to sign up for our monthly E-News, please visit SenatorMichaelWeber.com or call our office 5173-730-994. And that's it. If there's any questions, we could do that.
Well, thank you, Senator Weber. Appreciate your transparency, being here on a regular basis to update not just the city council, but all of the residents of Sterling Heights. Is there any council member with a question, comment?
All right.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Have a good meeting.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Mr.?
Mayor, I can't pass up the opportunity to talk about roads just for a few seconds. With the additional state funding that we're gonna be getting when it's fully phased in over the next year or so, it'd be $8 million more a year for road funding, so when you look at that over five years, $40 million more in additional road funding, which is significant. And we've spent over $500 million on roads over the last 10 years, so Sterling Heights is heavily vested in road improvements, and that is gonna continue to grow. When you think of our needs, the spoke roads up at Lakeside, which are not part of the Lakeside redevelopment, those need to be done. That's a $10 million project that we didn't have funding for. In addition, the Conrail Bridge on Metro Parkway between Van Dyke and Mound, that's close to $100 million project. Now, that's a county project, but nevertheless, we're involved in it, and we're gonna have a local share, and our match could be millions of dollars. So, this gives us an opportunity to work with the county and accelerate that bridge replacement. It's desperately needed, it doesn't look good, and it really needs to be replaced in the next couple of years. We'll be laser-focused on that with this new road funding. Also, we are on the cusp of a $20 million improvement for Ryan Road, the first phase of reconstructing Ryan Road, and it'd be from 14 Mile to Metro Parkway. So, this new road funding allows us to leverage additional funding at the federal level and from other grants and so on. So, more road improvements coming in Sterling Heights in a big way, and we appreciate our legislative team pushing for our needs in Sterling Heights, and especially Senator Weber. And now, if you don't mind, I'd like to move on to the next topic. As you know, we've been talking a lot about parking as it relates to new development in the city. I think most would agree that our commercial centers are overparked as they were designed 30, 40 years ago, and we have to come up with new standards and so on, many of which we've been implementing already in our PUD developments over the last five years or so. Our city planner, Dr. Parcell, is gonna talk about the recent study that's been completed that will ramp up to the required parking zoning ordinance changes that are necessary. So, I'd like to introduce Dr. Parcell to lead this discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool, Mayor Taylor, members of council, Mr. Kuschubski. So, I am here with everyone's favorite topic, which is parking spaces, something that since I started three years ago has been brought up very frequently from city council. It's been a challenge to look at citywide on a development-by-development perspective, and something that we have kind of grappled with needing reform for on a broad scale. So, on the cusp of our zoning ordinance comprehensive rewrite, Mr. Keenan, Mr. Castor, and I were sitting around and kind of coming up with ideas that we could try and implement throughout the city. However, in a city this size, with the land uses we have in our existing development, it's challenging for a one-size-fits-all parking reform to be implemented. So, we thought, and thanks to our partners at Mishta and MEDC for the technical assistance funds to offset our master plan, we were able to use all of that funding from grants to get a parking study done with this team from Spalding to Decker. So, we look at the city of Sterling Heights, and we look at all the development that's going on. We also look at the challenge that's posed to us. The biggest request that you see through conditional rezonings, that you see through planned unit developments, is parking reductions. We have a built environment now where 42% of the city is built out. It's hardscape, impervious surfaces, and it's something that we want to chip away at. We want to make for less maintenance, we want to bring in more green space, we want to facilitate redevelopment. Now, we're realizing that our existing parking requirements, last updated in the early 2000s, are not aligned with where we're seeing the market going as people shop online more, as people are bringing in new development. It's just not lining up. We have oversized parking, some of which are thousands of spaces that are not actually in line with the city's Vision 2040 sustainability and redevelopment goals that are kind of at odds when we bring things to the Zoning Board of Appeals or to you to review, and we have to review them on a case-by-case basis. This is not always easy for people who are trying to streamline their development, trying to get permits and secure funding in a reasonable time. So, we wanted to go out to bid and find a solution that we can implement and give to our team that will be doing the zoning ordinance rewrite kind of way forward. So, when we adopted the master plan earlier this year, the word parking shows up 92 times in 194 pages. So, it's a heavy emphasis on what parking's going to be. Some of our goals that we want to do is how to lower parking standards and establish maximums, incentivize shared parking, like in the North Van Dyke Avenue area, add in bike parking, something that I know council has called out as not being prevalent enough in a lot of our zoning districts, making sure we have safe sidewalk connections through parking lots from the right-of-ways, and implementing EV charging readiness and all-new development in the city. So, to get from point A to point B, we engaged with the team from Spalding to Decker to bring forward the parking study that looks at the entire city, brings in best practices, and then helps us take this report, provide it to the team at Giffords Webster, along with the tool that was developed through this, to come up with kind of a one-size-fits-all Sterling Heights-specific parking recommendation. So, I will pass it over to Cassie and Kayla to give you the rest of the presentation, so you can kind of see what the results yielded and what our next steps are.
Good evening. Cassie Meidel with Spalding D. Decker. Thank you for having us here to provide our findings from the study. So, Jake mentioned, or Dr. Parcell mentioned, our scope of work was to conduct a citywide parking study that delivered the data needed right in a usable tool for you moving forward and answered the questions you have to justify off-street parking ordinance amendments in support of your master plan goals. There we go. And so, what is, you know, what did we know was really important going into this study? That you needed to quantify existing parking supply and utilization, looking at corridors, nodes and corridors across the city for a citywide study, also looking at data pre-pandemic and post-pandemic, you know, including years in between, and consider changes in use, population, and development over time, and also the land use type and peak hours of operations at those businesses. And so, to be more specific, what were our sources? As mentioned, we looked at 35 private off-street parking lots across the city in mixed-use nodes and corridors. We also combined multiple sources, you know, our toolbox in a usable tool for you, so that we, and that's an ArcGIS tool, will show an example, but pulled in the future land use map, you know, and current zoning, used aerial imagery from two, between about every two years of 2018, between 2018 to 2024, and counted cars parked in aerial images from near map and saved all of that. So, it's a tool for you moving forward. We also flew the city and collected our own aerial imagery earlier this year, and sent crews out into the field to do traditional counts, where you're driving through the parking lot and recording parked vehicles. We also included SEMCOG population projections and the Institute of Traffic Engineers Parking Generation Manual, which crowdsources data, you know, is used across the nation, considering land use and peak hours of a variety of business types. We also, as mentioned, added the zoning ordinance and then used Google Maps to justify, like, popular peak times for when we went to sites to conduct field count studies, so that we had those peak times and the highest level, right, of utilization in parking lots. Then, we also referred to more traditional planning sources, redevelopment-ready community guides and other state-supported sources, and put all of this in and as read, you know, GIS online tool. Here's an example of that with the complete data set. And so, you can see the table on the left is like the summary table, and each of the columns have those sources that we mentioned. So, it's all in one place, and your team here at the city has access to that. We've completely turned over that data. So, now I'm going to share the clicker here with my colleague, Kayla Malden, who's gonna present our findings from the study.
Thank you, Cassie. And she laughs because our last few presentations have all suffered from clicker issues, and so this is nothing new. So, really briefly to share, as Cassie and Dr. Parcell mentioned, this parking study resulted in a report that you can use and has that narrative form, but the really valuable tool for you all is the GIS database that comes out of it. Being able to see on a parking lot level all of this information that was collected and summarized over various years from multiple sources, and includes the land use information as well as peak hours, as Cassie mentioned. We did put together some high-level data just to give the city an idea, an overall picture of where the parking utilization rates are at. Just for some context, recommended percentage of utilization for parking lots, so that's looking at your total use, like how many vehicles are parked compared to your supply of parking. The recommended range is somewhere from 75 to 85, depending on the source that you look at. Every parking lot that we studied, occupancy never exceeded 55%. So, you were severely underparked in all 35 of those parking lots that we had studied. In addition to that, we saw that the ordinance requirements for the city exceeded even what the ITE Parking Generation Manual recommended. In addition, the ITE Parking Generation Manual, their recommendations exceeded what we saw out in the field when we were actually doing the counts. So, you kind of have this double escalation of requirements from what the actual demand studied indicated. We did look at a few trends just to see if there was any changes based on the pandemic and the way that e-commerce and drive-through delivery, things like that, have changed over time. What we found is that there's no change in your parking utilization from pre-COVID, so 2018 to 2025. It's really consistent over that period, so that really wasn't an impact. We also just studied multiple sources, and general trends are that for some uses, that experience is still occurring in person, so there's still parking generation. That would be things like your grocery stores, or 88% of trips are still happening to the physical store, whereas restaurants, that has really deviated, and so we're seeing a lot of drive-through traffic as well as third-party delivery services, which is probably no surprise to you all. One more thing I wanted to mention, so again, we wanted to give you a really robust look at the data, and we wanted the city to be able to stand by the findings. So, we actually ran some statistical analysis on this information. If anyone is a statistical nerd like I am, we did a t-test with Python, and there actually was a significant negative correlation. So, the bigger your parking lot was, just from a total space count perspective, the more likely it was to be underutilized, so the lower rate of utilization. So, any of your strip plazas, for example, that have those huge parking lots, or like an example we're about to show of the MJC movie theater, those parking lots are the most likely culprits for that really, really low utilization rate. So, we wanted to provide an example of what this looks like in the report. So, this is one of our studied lots. Again, this is the movie theater off of Van Dyke. Just to give you some perspective, the number of spaces required for this site by ordinance is almost 1,500 spaces. The number of spaces suggested by the ITE Parking Generation Manual is much smaller than that, at 641 spaces. The actual number of spaces provided on-site, for some reason, even exceeds what your ordinance requires. So, huge amount of parking. The peak occupancy that we observed was in 2023 at 348 cars parked on that site, so 22% utilization. We did go out in 2025 during evening, weekend hours, and still did not get an occupancy that was higher than that 2023 rate. So, I think the scale of this parking challenge is maybe even more so than sometimes the perspective that we have when we're just experiencing those things on the ground. So, in addition to the data, we did a pretty thorough review of Sterling Heights' existing zoning ordinances. So, we looked at your off-street parking requirements, and then also got into some of your landscaping ordinances and pedestrian mobility ordinances, so things that talked about pathway connections, drive-through requirements, and other site development standards that are related to parking. As Mr. Vanderpool had indicated, there are some limitations with the existing ordinance. There are some really great things that the city has already started implementing, but just some really slight tweaks can make it easier to utilize those tools and be able to grant those parking reductions where warranted. So, one of the things we found is that the mixed-use overlay districts that you currently have that are tied to your future land use map allow parking reductions, but those are in places where new developments aren't proposed super often, and there's also a level discretionary review that makes it difficult for the applicant to understand what level of parking reduction would be allowed. Parallel parking and on-street parking configurations are currently prohibited in your ordinances unless it's through the PUD process. So, someone wouldn't be able to come in and count on-street parking spaces, you know, if they existed. In addition, there's little room for kind of that creative development to provide spaces in front of a business or a mixed-use storefront. This one was interesting. So, you do allow in your parking ordinance shared-use parking, which just means if you have two businesses next to each other, for example, that have different hours of operation, they could share their parking. But there is a little, small, kind of like gray line in the ordinance, almost like a footnote, that says if you utilize that shared parking calculation, anything that's reduced from what would normally be required by ordinance has to be reserved on the site as a reserved parking field. For a lot of applicants, it's just not worth it to do that because it's actually more costly and more resources over time for them to use that part of the site as a landscaped feature versus just paving it as parking anyway. So, we suspect that's how you've ended up, potentially, with some of these sites that are providing even more parking spaces than required by ordinance. And then finally, your shared parking reductions are only granted for those uses that have zero overlap in hours. So, it's not even, you know, a coffee shop or bakery and a sushi restaurant that opens in the evenings. If they have any overlap, like at that lunch hour, they're not allowed to share their parking configurations. So, again, just these slight limitations to tools that otherwise would be really impactful. So, we did, as Dr. Parcell mentioned, give some really clear recommendations for changing ordinances, amending ordinances to address some of these challenges. This parking study itself does not write those ordinances. We're not asking you to review any ordinances at this time. That's gonna come later through a much more comprehensive process with Dr. Parcell and his team, and that will involve public input, public hearings, and the standard process. But the recommendations that we gave are really tied back to the study objectives and to those goals that Dr. Parcell shared from the master plan itself. So, lowering the parking minimums and establishing maximums, incentivizing shared parking, addressing bike parking and pedestrian pathways, incentivizing shared facilities and sidewalk connections, and then creating requirements for, it's cut off here, I apologize, creating requirements for EV charging as well in parking lots. When we were looking at these parking ordinance changes, we were using a lot of different tools, but we did start with the data itself. So, looking at what we saw from a demand perspective, and then making that a little more robust of an analysis with peer review of other community ordinances, and looking at the redevelopment-ready communities' best practices for parking flexibility, especially because during the time that we were doing this, you were in the midst of that process of getting certified, so that was really important to us. We also looked at the Michigan Association of Planning's zoning reform toolkit, parking reform network, and a bunch of other resources that are available to planners and engineers when they're looking at policy changes. So, what came out of this were 10 recommendations that, again, were really specific, related to ordinances, but didn't necessarily draft that language outright. What we did was provide really clear recommendations, along with case studies and next steps for implementation. One that I think will be most interesting to this group is the appendix of the parking study, which actually includes a table of proposed parking minimums and maximums. And we went back and tested those for each of the parking lots that we studied to make sure that what we had found in the data was consistent with what we were then recommending for ordinance, to get to that 75% to 85% parking utilization range that I had mentioned. We had also provided some examples of how to do the shared parking calculations with the team, a parking kind of shared-use agreement that the team can then utilize if an applicant comes in, is just kind of a starting point or model to start that conversation, and then again, some other specific ordinance recommendations to address these other factors that had come up during the study. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Dr. Parcell to talk about next steps.
Thanks, Kayla. So, this is something that's really exciting because while nothing's codified yet through the zoning ordinance, the language hasn't been drafted. the zoning ordinance, the language hasn't been drafted. We're already seeing the ability for staff to use this in a practical application. So we have a plaza here that you've approved a project on at 16 and 1/2 in Van Dyke. It has 999 parking spaces there. That was only ever utilized, I think, from 100 to 90 parking spaces on an observed count. So we've realized although this plaza is 100% full, it has two anchor tenants, multiple restaurants and a church, the parking lot is just too much there. There's no parking lot islands, there's no vegetation. So we actually used this tool to review this parking lot and through approval from council, we reduced 150 parking spaces. We're getting 54 trees, almost 200 shrubs, plaza, 4,500 square foot plaza that provides safe access for pedestrians from the right-of-way up to the front of the building. And then this is kind of the model that we want to use is people look to right-size their parking. So if somebody's coming in and they want to remove their parking lot, add in parking lot islands, we can bring in more landscaping, we can bring in more trees and pedestrian amenities, and we have the rationale now through our actual G I S tool that's proprietary to the city to do that and to encourage people to do that. So as we reduce maintenance, we add in green space, we add in trees, and we help break up parking throughout the city. Then what you'll see next, coming from here, we have a comprehensive zoning ordinance update coming here in 2026. Parking is probably the most difficult part to get over for that. 36 square miles, thousands of parking lots that are all completely different, utilized in different ways and different areas of the city. So all the recommendations here will be streamlined right into our zoning reform. We'll still continue to use the tools that we do have and are using to help incentivize redevelopment of sites, bring in vegetation, bring in green space and pedestrian amenities that can be incorporated into existing lots to help with maintenance, but in a way that makes it a lot easier for the people in the community to enjoy, to maintain and to redevelop with. So we're very excited for this. We think they did an amazing job. It'll be shared with council following this meeting for the report to view and forward to using this in application as we move forward. Thank you.
And Mayor, there'll be much more to come on this. As mentioned earlier, after council has a chance to digest this, and I'm sure you're going to have some thoughts and ideas as we move forward with the actual zoning ordinance changes, so we look forward to continued feedback.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Radke.
Could we ask some questions of the consultants while they're here?
Yeah, sure. It was a good presentation. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. A lot of information on Mr. Radke.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I completely agree with the mayor. I'm excited to read this presentation. I just had a few questions from your presentation. I was hoping you could answer, and I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
That's okay. My name's Kayla.
Kayla. Okay, Kayla. So I got that down. Well, the, I'm sorry?
Malden is her last name.
Malden, Ms. Malden. Thank you. Just briefly, what was the, you said you recalculated the rates, and I'm excited about this because anyone who has eyeballs knows that we have way too much parking in this city that is useless and adds to our stormwater runoff and is just, adds to our impervious surface and adds heat islands and things like that. What was your baseline occupancy rate for what you're shooting for parking lots to be? Because if you read the materials, like Strong Towns or other comprehensive material about parking, they often shoot for like an 80 or 85% occupancy rate. So I was wondering, what did your calculations use?
Yeah, that's a great question. So we were trying to be a little more realistic just with what current conditions are, so we were looking closer to that 75%. But 75 to 85% is generally seen as acceptable for parking utilization across multiple sources, and that's specifically for non-residential parking. So residential parking has a different rate that we look at.
Absolutely, and I agree with you. I would say that the whole goal with parking is that you can find a space, but that a majority is being used. Because parking is the only thing in America that's like Schröder's cat alive. You have to have a place that you park your car and a place you're going to park your car. There's two spaces at least for every car in America, which makes absolutely no sense, but there's that. I was just hoping we can get our occupancy rate a little higher because to me, that is the biggest, I think, drawback to creating a more vibrant, walkable, connected community is these massive seas of parking that kind of inhibit you wanting to cross them, especially because they're unsafe. I was in Chicago this weekend to watch Michigan destroy Northwestern. We won, it was good enough. And you know, the distance between, say, the back of the parking lot at Meyer at 16 Mile in Van Dyke and the front door is equivalent to several city blocks, but people don't think about it that way. Now, if you park in Chicago, you gotta walk three blocks. It's, oh, yeah, it's normal. But if you were telling me to go park at the back of the Meyer parking lot, I'd say, are you crazy? Why would I want to, why would I want to walk that? I think we have to really flip this script. So I'm wondering what your thoughts were on the I T E manual still overshooting what the conditions on the ground were and how we can kind of right-size that.
That is a great question that I don't know if I'm equipped to answer. I would say the I T E parking generation manual is crowdsourced data, so it comes from multiple places throughout the nation. They do try to break it down by context. So Sterling Heights is considered a suburban scale for the purposes of the I T E parking generation manual, but it's just something to note that when people are contributing their own data, there are different contexts in different places. To get back really quick to the occupancy, one thing that the appendix table does, and again, we were testing this for various ranges, but it sets up minimums and maximums. So your minimum may be higher on the occupancy scale where the maximum is going to be lower, right? But it allows that little bit of flexibility for developer to come in and say, you know, this is what we really need. And then we provided recommendations on parking reductions and what standards you may look at to add an additional reduction beyond the reductions that would be built in if you actually changed your parking minimums and maximums. So it's kind of a multi-level approach to be able to build in that, one, just overall reduction to just make things easier at a basic level, but then additional steps of reductions on that site basis because there are still times when you're going to want to be able to look at the site conditions and examine what the best case scenario is for that specific piece. And so our hope is to give you the tools to be able to do that.
You kind of jumped ahead to my next question.
Sorry.
No, you're fine. You did a very good job. That a lot of the material on this says you shouldn't start parking minimums, you just set parking maximums. Because developers kind of, this idea in their head that they should go beyond the minimum, you know, you always say, what is the minimum amount of flair, right? You know, seven pieces, are you 14? I think developers think the same way. They want to go beyond. So I'm wondering what your thoughts are on the city setting parking maximums because under your research, even the I T E standard, if was set as a maximum, would never be reached by many of these parking lots from your little data that I've seen you present tonight.
Yeah, well, that's exactly why I set the maximums because we saw that developers are, you know, and we don't know if the ordinance has changed it at some point right after these sites were developed, but our initial impression is that developers are actually building more parking than what was required. We definitely want to make sure that that's not happening, and so that's the reason for adding the maximums, to really ensure that someone's not just coming in and paving their whole site because they don't want to do landscaping or meet the other requirements and standards that you are trying to achieve through your sustainability goals.
Oh, this is a very big concern of mine because I see that on the Z B A agenda this month. I think there's six different parcels and businesses trying to get out of minimum landscaping, maximum parking, trying to just basically pave over their entire sites. I think this is a perfect example of why hopefully the Z B A will think about this very hard when they make their decision. Because I think that we've too often let people escape our landscaping, other standards by just building and building and building more parking. Well, I would say I look forward to reading this. And just one more thing, looking at the M J R site that you highlighted, if we go by both the I T E standard as a maximum and then the actual usage, which is even lower than that, I think it would free up about half the parking lot for some kind of redevelopment, even maybe a building that faces M J R. I think that that would be a tremendous addition throughout these overparked sites in our community to add both growth while not disturbing the natural conditions that so many residents are concerned about.
That's great. I think that really, our understanding of Dr. Parcell and his team's goals was really to give the data to make that case. Because you've identified in your master plan at this point, your future land use vision for those corridors and nodes, and it involves redevelopment of those sites, if we're requiring that parking to remain there, that's really just not possible.
Oxing them out.
Right. So.
Dr. Parcell, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I think that, you know, I want to commend Spalding to Decker. They did an amazing job on this. There's not going to be one solution for every parcel in the city. We very well may end up proposing to you all in a few months, parking maximums in some locations and different parking standards elsewhere, based on what we, you know, dig deeper into this and actually craft ordinance language. But our biggest goal is to increase landscaping, increase green space, break up parking lots, make it more friendly for people who are walking in. We have an upcoming, up to $40 million redevelopment at the Forum of Gateways of the Walmart parking lot that's going to include an actual pedestrian walkway from the Ring Road to the front of the Walmart. And without this study and this tool, things like that are not going to be possible elsewhere in the city where we can't show that the data is going to make it work. So it's a proprietary tool that is all ours to use, recommendations that'll fuel incredible zoning reform. We presented it at the planning conference. Kayla did an amazing job and people from across the, thank you, people from across the state have been asking for the study, asking to see how we did it. And, you know, our goal was to bring the highest level of service here, and it starts with something that just gives us the data to do so, so.
Well, I'd say it's very exciting. I had one final question that I thought of while you were speaking. This is all about commercial parking and commercial, I assume industrial corridors. I guess, I'm curious, what would happen, because I'm all about shared use parking. I think one thing that we haven't done is when we have a commercial side that's next to a street with parallel parking on a residential street, for example, or we have an apartment building on the corner of a residential street where you'd have parallel parking, those parking spaces have normally been excluded from calculations. And like Ina Drive is a perfect example, I live off of Ina. People park there. So part of the parking for the building is going to be on Ina Drive, we just know it. And it seems to me that the way we've been doing it for years has been wrong because if we don't calculate those spaces as part of their shared parking, because no one else parks there besides building residents because there's buildings on both sides, I think it actually requires us to create even more spaces. So I'm hoping that that'll be reformed too, that we will think about some kind of calculation for shared spaces, for on-street parking, for example, and things like that. Because I think that we don't count those enough and that spaces provided by the city, maintained by the city at our cost, that are basically absent from calculation as it currently is. And I hope we can change that. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Radke. Council, anyone else? Not appreciate your presentation and your answers this evening. Thank you. Very eye-opening.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
It shows too, I think, you know, that the decisions that we make impact people for decades. And so I think we're being very mindful of it, and it's interesting. Mr. Vanderpool?
Thank you, Mayor. It's going to be hard to top the topic of parking, but I think we can do it with this next presentation. As the city council knows, back in April, you passed a very innovative collaborative initiative with the city of Warren called the Arsenal Alliance. That initiative combined forces between the city of Sterling Heights and the city of Warren, first time we've ever had an agreement like that whereby each city is contributing $250,000, so $500,000 a year over multiple years, millions of dollars to protect and grow our defense and aerospace assets in our two cities. It's incredibly important. Thousands of dollars depend on this, thousands of jobs depend on this initiative, and it's the power of collaboration. And so after the mayor and city council approved that alliance, we began thinking about how, what are other ways we could partner with the city of Warren, Macomb County's two largest cities, and there's so much opportunity to combine forces and share resources, especially in times of emergencies and weather events and so on. With us this evening is our Department of Public Works Director, Michael Moore, who's going to talk about this new inter-local agreement with the city of Warren and how it's going to benefit both communities.
Good evening, council, city manager, city attorney and members of the community. Tonight, I'm thrilled to present an exciting new inter-local agreement that strengthens the partnership between the city of Sterling Heights and the city of Warren through mutual aid for our Department of Public Works. This agreement enables either city to request assistance when extraordinary circumstances such as severe weather events, infrastructure failures, or waste management challenges exceed local resources. At its core, this agreement will enhance public safety and emergency preparedness, strengthen inner-city cooperation and resource sharing, and ensure critical public works operations continue during times of crisis. This forward-thinking step that enhances resilience for both communities, and I'm excited to bring it forward tonight. Tonight's agreement for public works mutual aid builds on the strong foundation of inner-city cooperation that the city manager just expressed. Sterling Heights and Warren already collaborate through several mutual aid programs, including the Macomb County Chiefs of Police Association, Michigan Mutual Aid Box Alarm System, or M A B S, the Arsenal Alliance Partnership promoting regional growth, and cooperation of the use of parks and recreation amenities. This collaboration aligns with our guiding principles of public safety, sustainability and collaboration, ensuring both communities are better prepared for shared challenges. Emergency public work services covered by the agreement include, but are not limited to sewer and water main repairs, catch basin and infrastructure maintenance, snow removal and salting, refuse, recycling and yard waste removal, tree trimming and removal, and other essential public works functions. These services reflect our commitment to sustainability, enriched living and maintaining a safe and resilient environment for residents. Some operational details worth mentioning. Both cities affirm that their D P W personnel are qualified to perform essential public works functions under this agreement. The agreement establishes a framework for reciprocal service support, including provisions for reimbursement, insurance coverage, liability protection and mutual indemnification. Each city's residents receive priority service before aid is provided to the other. Each city typically bears its own personnel costs except for waste removal services. That would be a time and materials charge from Warren to Sterling Heights. Key benefits of the mutual aid agreement include: strengthens regional cooperation, enhances emergency response capabilities, promotes efficient resource sharing and cost control, builds on existing mutual aid partnerships and supports community resilience. Through this agreement, we advance our vision of a connected, sustainable city, and our values of collaboration and innovation create a stronger and safer city for all of our residents. Lastly, I want to thank everyone who worked collaboratively to bring this agreement together, that being the entire Warren team, the city manager, Mark Vanderpool, city attorney, Mark Koshubsky, and our assistant city manager, Dale Dvojakovski. This partnership reflects the spirit of our guiding principles and core values: excellence, proactive, responsive and collaboration that benefits both communities. Thank you.
Mayor, I just wanted to add that this item was on the Warren City Council this evening and was approved, and it's on your consent agenda this evening. Inter-local agreements go on consent. But again, this is unique, it's innovative, it's highly creative. I'm not aware of another group of cities doing this across the state, so I think we're leading the way here. Obviously, the beneficiaries are businesses and residents in both cities and taxpayers. This is maximizing our resources and minimizing tax expenditures in both communities. So thank you. I'm not sure if there are any questions on that, Mayor, but if there is, I'm happy to respond or we can later.
Looks like we're good.
Okay. And just a couple of housekeeping items. A true sign of the winter season being here is our ice rink opening in less than two weeks. Our ice rink will open on Monday, December 1st, so please take note of that. It's become a destination place for residents of all ages and it's widely utilized. It's been just a huge success in Sterling Heights. And just a reminder, with Thanksgiving holiday season coming up, our city facilities are closed on November 27th and the 28th. There will be no refuse collection on Thanksgiving Day, so it'll be delayed one day. Thursday's collection will be on Friday, Friday's will be on Saturday, so please take note of that. Mayor, lastly, at the conclusion of tonight's agenda, I'm requesting that the city council convene a closed session pursuant to Section 8 H of the Open Meetings Act for council to consult with the city attorney regarding a confidential written legal opinion, and that concludes my And that concludes my report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpool. We do have a presentation tonight, and this is to acknowledge and accept a donation by Ford Motor Company to sponsor an Inspiring Green project as an inspire partner. We have a presentation from our marketing and communications manager, Marissa Russo. Ms. Russo.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor, members of city council, city manager, and city attorney. I'm here tonight with a brief update on our Inspiring Green initiative and to recognize a new community partner whose support will have a lasting impact on our city. As you know, Inspiring Green is the city's long-term commitment to enhancing and sustaining our tree canopy, improving air quality, and strengthening the overall environmental resilience of Sterling Heights. Since launching the program, we have worked closely with residents, businesses, and community organizations to plant trees, restore green spaces, and build a healthier future for generations to come. The Inspiring Green initiative aspired from a discussion on how we could bring more life into our Adopt a Road project and how we could get more people involved to help beautify our roadways. And with that, we created a program with purpose that has allowed people at all levels to participate. We created three additional levels that people or organizations could sponsor to make a bigger impact while still offering our ambassador-level partnership for groups who are looking to contribute in hours and can still get involved. Tonight, I am proud to announce that Ford Motor Company's Van Dyke Electric Power Train Center, located right here on Van Dyke between 18 and 18 and a half mile road, has joined us as an inspire partner with a generous $30,000 contribution. This investment directly supports tree planting throughout our medians, parks, and neighborhoods, or helps us improve our, our, oops, sorry, helps us move closer to our Vision 2040 goals for sustainability and livability. Our inspire program or inspired tier is the $30,000 partnership, and that's what they are here tonight to present. So that includes a list of different items to help give some recognition and also bring light to our program. So they will receive one 36 by 36 inch round sign on the designated roadway. They'll plant up to 75 to 80 trees, or eco-friendly landscaping with native plantings and things of that. We'll work with them as well as our planning department to help kind of coordinate some different designs. We'll, you know, obviously do some social media posts and put them in our newsletters, city website, city magazine, and obviously recognize them here as city council. We'll have, you know, our ribbon cutting come of the conclusion of that project and definitely bring a lot of light to the wonderful work that they're contributing to the city and to this program. Some of the trees that you guys will see throughout this process are here on the screen. They're all native to Michigan. And then this is the chunk of space that you guys will soon see developed and to have a lot of trees and some native plantings as well. I'm gonna go ahead and invite Ford up to the podium so that they can speak as well.
Hello. Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Audrey Joslin. I'm the Plant Environmental Control Engineer at Van Dyke Electric Power Train Center. And this is Kerry Holt. He is actually from the corporate environmental team.
Oh.
So yeah, we're here on behalf of Motor Company, Ford Motor Company, to present a check to help with the Inspiring Green and plant trees in front of our property and make the city beautiful.
Awesome.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
But, um, so we're really deeply grateful for Ford's leadership and commitment to advancing the greener, more sustainable community here in Sterling Heights. Their partnership reflects the strong relationship we continue to build here in Sterling Heights where our businesses don't just operate, but truly care about contributing to the quality of life for our community members. At this time, I do want to turn it back over to city council to consider the 30,000, and then after that invite you down to take a photo with Ford.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Russo. Counsel, we do have a suggested action. Is there anyone who'd like to make that resolution or motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Radke?
Resolve to acknowledge and accept a donation by Ford Motor Company of $30,000 to sponsor an Inspiring Green project as an inspire partner.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Mr. Radke?
Just briefly, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to Ford for this generous donation. I think this is the second one we've had in a couple of months, and it's, it's inspiring, and it's, it's, it's going to activate that area. You know, we are trying to re-tree our city that was affected by both the Emerald Ash Bore and honestly, which you watched some zoning conditions that have been created from prior councils and prior generations that have led certain areas of our city to be bereft of trees. And this one area where we just got sidewalk a couple of years ago, thanks to your generous support, which makes walking that area much easier for pedestrians, trust me. I see them on your sidewalk all the time. I think this is just one more step in both improving that area, improving the Van Dyke 18 and a half mile corridor, and I think it's going to just add a lot of curb appeal to your property. I think that's probably why you selected it. And so I want to thank you for that. It's very generous. If you want to do more, we have more to do, so we'd love to have you. But this is going to be a very great gift, and we appreciate it. And I think our residents are already seeing the difference in the tree plantings that are going on. So thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Radke. Mrs. Sarowski.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Just very briefly, I too want to commend Ford and thank you for doing this. As a, as a resident, not a council person, that is right in my area. I live at 18 in Utica. So I drive that area all the time, and it's very industrial. It's very busy. It's so that it really, one, and we know that trees and plantings help calm traffic a little bit, and that's a crazy off-ramp when you're coming up of M-53. So I'm hoping that that will help as well in that, and I just want to thank you again because it will, as, as has been said, it will beautify the city. Any, you know, I, I love planting my own little yard, so I help, I am happy that you're helping us in the city as well. Thank you very much. And that's all, Mayor.
Thank you, Mrs. Sarowski. Counsel, anyone else? If not, yeah, I'd just say $30,000 is a lot of money. I don't care if you're Ford Motor Company or, or not, but that's a lot of money to, to show that you're committed to this community and that you want to improve the community. And I, and I think you'll get a lot out of it, and I certainly know the residents of Sterling Heights will, so I appreciate that. And we're really excited about it. So, good job, Marissa. This has been a great project so far and excited to see where it goes next. So thank you for your leadership and spearheading this. And counsel, with no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let's go down and take a picture.
Sure. Oh, Lord. Yeah. Thank you so much.
I appreciate it. We should have just made you wipe this out.
Keep sitting. Yeah.
Take the date off.
Thank you. We appreciate you guys.
Yes. It's very important. Thank you guys. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you.
All right. That will move on to the next item on our agenda tonight, which is the consent agenda with the omission of Item H, which has been moved to consideration 8B. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on any item on tonight's consent agenda? If not, counsel, we need a motion?
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Zarco?
Move to approve the consent agenda as amended. Support.
It's been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is a consideration item. This is to consider a request to transfer ownership of an escrowed 2024 Class C liquor license with dance entertainment permit from Wise Properties Incorporated to One York Incorporated, and transfer location from 42305 Garfield Road, Clinton Township, Michigan to 13937 Lakeside Circle, Sterling Heights, Michigan. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? You would? Come on up. Yep. Are you, you're the owner, the applicant?
The restaurant's.
All right. Let's, uh, those chicken wings. Wow. Good. I've eaten there before. And the kimchi, good too. Go ahead, sir.
Oh, um, I, I would like to purchase the liquor license to be able to offer full dining experience in my restaurant. We're currently a fast casual called Kimchi Box. I currently have eight locations in Michigan, and Sterling Heights was my first. I started 2021 during the pandemic, and I grew from the Sterling Heights location. I'm going to invest into revamping the space to accommodate alcohol. I would train all my servers to be a full-service restaurant, and I'm going to emulate a very, it's an Asian street food experience, including drinks. So I would appreciate if I could be approved.
Okay. Very good. The council likely have some questions for you. We appreciate your presentation. If you want to just hang, hang tight.
Okay.
When we're deliberating, if we have questions, you know, don't go too far so we can.
Sounds good. I'll be back there.
Okay. Sounds good. All right. Anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, counsel, we need a motion?
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Sarowski?
Resolve that the request to transfer ownership of an escrowed 2024 Class C liquor license with Sunday sales permit, PM, and dance entertainment permit from the Wise Properties Incorporated to One York Incorporated, and transfer location from 24, excuse me, 42305 Garfield Road, Clinton Township, Michigan, to 13937 Lakeside Circle, Sterling Heights, Michigan, be considered for approval.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mrs. Sarowski?
Just a little bit. Thank you so much, Mayor Taylor. So I, I, I don't pers, well, I do. Could you come up so we could ask you some questions through the chair to our potential new owner here, or new owner, potential recipient? So tell, tell us again, I mean, I, I have not had the benefit, although I love kimchi, of eating at your restaurant yet, so tell me your, tell me your menu.
My menu currently consists of Korean fried chicken, as well as bibimbap, which is rice bowl with a variety of vegetables, Korean barbecue items like brugogi and spicy pork and chicken. With the addition of alcohol, I would most likely add more items, as well as soups and ramens that kind of fit the atmosphere.
So is, you said Korean barbecue. Is it like the K-Pot experience where it's self-grilled?
No.
You guys provide it to the table?
Correct. I would not have the self-service grill. It would just be prepared in the kitchen.
I like my food prepared for me by system. Why go out? So, okay, well, very good. Those are my basic questions. It does sound like you've, you've, this being, even though you started with us, you've expanded for eight and an additional azalea, so I think that you, it sounds like you know what you're doing, especially if you could grow during the pandemic.
Yes, I'm, especially because the Sterling Heights location is, is very big and it's on the hall road. It's a very traveled-upon road. I, I believe it would make sense to be able to offer, especially during the dinnertime, it gets dark fast here, so.
Yes, it does. Okay, well, very good. And I do know, so have you already applied to the state for your liquor license transfer?
Correct. I believe I was approved.
Okay. And that's what we expected, but I always like to have that on record. So very good. All right, thank you. That's all the questions I have, Mayor Taylor.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Sarowski. Counsel, anyone else? Mr. Radke?
Just briefly, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy that you're investing in it. I'm curious, is it going to become a full-service restaurant, or is it going to be still kind of a kimchi box with more of a street food experience, or? I, I've eaten there. It's very good, so I have no problem with it.
That's, that's good to hear. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm going to transition into more of a full-service restaurant. The, the spaces is big, so it doesn't fit too much of the fast casual experience, especially with the sell of alcohol. It's, it will make sense to have waiters and waitresses serve alcohol instead of.
Are you planning on changing the name of the restaurant?
Um, no, not, not yet. Maybe I'll have like disclaimers in the bottom.
And you already operate two full-service alcohol establishments currently?
Correct. I have one in Ann Arbor and one in Northville.
I, I don't see a problem with this. I think that you've shown that you can do business in the city and that this will just be an addition to your current space, so I have no problem with this, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Radke. Mrs. Schmidt.
Mayor Taylor, thank you. Through the chair to Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Okay. Just, all of my questions have basically been answered. However, the, the liquor license comes with a dance permit. And I know the answer to this question, but can you tell the residents, are you planning on having dancing and entertaining there, or is it just because it was attached to that liquor license?
I will have no dancing or.
Waiters.
It's not full-blown, so you can't have dancing.
Okay. I'm excited, I'm excited for you and totally congratulations. You have done a phenomenal job, especially through the pandemic, to expand the way you have, and, and, you know, I commend you, so I wish you well.
Yeah, thank, thank you, guys. I started about five years ago, and I also renewed my lease to be there for five more years, so.
Oh, great.
I plan to be at Sterling Heights for a long time.
Well, I think there's some building that's going to be going on right, right behind you there, so you might want to advance it for a few more years after that, so. Nothing further, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Anyone else? Well, I want to tell you, sir, I'm glad you're here. Because my kids, their favorite restaurant was Payway.
Oh, God.
Okay. So there was some real, there was some real tears shed when the Payway went away. But I have to tell you, they've got, my daughter loves Kimchi Box, the kids love it, so it's, it's phenomenal food. It's great. I'm very interested to see, because we, we ate a lot at, at Payway when it was there before, and then, and at Kimchi Box too. So seeing how you transition from fast casual to more, the more traditional dining experience, I think it'll be really interesting. We're, we, we love it. It's great food. It's very unique, and so we're, we're happy to have you. We go to K-Pot too, but I think, I think Kimchi Box is better. I don't, I don't, I don't like that cooking my own food. I don't get it.
Look at the politician in there.
But, um, hey, well, K-Pot, that's a Sterling Heights business too. I'm not trying to, to, to rain on their parade. It's a great product, and I'm happy to support this. So continued, good luck to you, sir.
Sounds good. Thank you. Thank you all.
Counsel, any further discussion? No further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Good luck.
Congrats. Thanks. Good luck.
Yay.
All right. We will go on to the next item, which is H from the consent agenda, and this is to award a bid for the comprehensive rehabilitation of the East Hampton Storm Pump Station, total cost of $263,083. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, do you want the floor, Mr. Radke?
Yeah, sure.
Mr. Radke?
I, can I do these both together? Mr. Koshubsky, do I have to make them as two separate motions?
No, they can be done together.
Okay. I move to award a bid for the comprehensive rehabilitation of the East Hampton Storm Pump Station to L. Dogastini and Sons, Inc., 15801 23 Mile Road, Macomb Township, Michigan, 48042. At unit pricing bid and approve a budget amendment in the amount of $263,083 to cover the cost of this purchase utilizing unspent funds budgeted from the 2024-2025 fiscal year.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mr. Radke?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I pulled this item just to show the residents some of the costs involved with stormwater in Sterling Heights, because we've talked about possibly establishing a stormwater utility. We're doing a study right now on the establishment of a stormwater utility. This is an example of, of how your general fund essentially funds a stormwater utility. Through the chair to Mr. Moore, I see him in the audience.
Yep.
Thank you for sticking around, Mr. Moore. Probably not by choice. Mr. Moore, through the chair, the East Hampton Storm Pump Station is about 50 years old now. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And it's, has it ever been restored before, or is this a complete restoration from its original condition?
That, it is a complete restoration from its original condition.
How many similar stations to this do we have throughout the city or around the city?
Upwards of 20.
How many of them have been restored so far?
Zero.
Thank you for sticking around, Mr. Moore. Probably not by choice. Mr. Moore, through the chair. The East Hampton Storm Pump Station is about 50 years old now. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And it's ever been restored before or is this a complete restoration from its original condition?
It is a complete restoration from its original condition.
How many similar stations to this do we have throughout the city or around the city?
Upwards of 20.
How many of them have been restored so far?
Zero.
So, we have about 20 with the expectation that it could be about $250,000 or more per restoration?
That's correct.
Those are all good. I'm sorry.
Well, every restoration is going to be a little bit different. So, I can, if I could take a half a step backwards?
Sure.
Okay. So, back just before COVID, we had a very comprehensive evaluation of stormwater and sanitary assets completed throughout the city. We had, if I'm sure most council remembers, we had the SAW grant given to us by Eagle. So, at that time, we hired a consultant AEW that went through and evaluated all city storm and sanitary assets. This is one of five that are on our docket to be updated. So, this is our first one that we're bringing forth.
So, we've about, if this, if they kind of stay around the same amount, say $200,000, looking at about a $1 million worth of stormwater repairs just to the pumping stations?
Very possible, yes. Each site is going to have different things that need to be replaced. So, the cost could vary, but it's a fair...
Right. And that's just the pumping stations. There's other stormwater assets throughout the community.
Correct.
I just wanted to illustrate this. We have a lot of underground infrastructure that goes unnoticed that I think that residents don't see, which requires, when it's updated, tremendous expense, because we're doing this, I believe, because both it's old and in bad repair, but also the parts are no longer compatible, the systems no longer work. And when we're done, it will be plugged in so we can be better monitored in a safer manner, because if this pump station were to fail, residents would flood, correct?
That's correct, yep.
Right.
Streets would flood, everything, and the streets would start to back up over the road.
Right. So, I'm happy to vote for this today, but I think this is just an example of why a stormwater utility is necessary for the community, because right now, this is just coming out of the general fund. We're just allocating money. Whereas, if we charged large consumers like Ford or Stellantis for their runoff, which is large because they have enormous parking lots, which we also discussed in our parking study earlier today, I think that this would better get us revenue to support these efforts and it wouldn't be a hidden expense on the backs of all the residents when, in actuality, certain property owners are using the system a lot more than others. That's all, that's all the reason I brought it forward. I'm happy to support this. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Radke. Counsel, anyone else? If not, no further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That completes that portion of our agenda. Move on to communications from citizens. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on any item? Not on tonight's agenda? Not, close that portion. Go on to reports from city administration.
Nothing further, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool. Mr. Kachubsky.
We do have one matter for closed session.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kachubsky. Counsel, any reports? New business?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yenness.
Through the chair to the city manager. I've noticed through my travels around town a significant number of road drains that are plugged with leaves and debris. And I know we don't really do street cleaning in the springtime, but I'm just wondering if DPW is going to be going around before we have any heavy snows, cleaning our drains out.
Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselman Yenness, the answer is yes. DPW director can give you a more detailed response, but we do that every year. Obviously, we, it's better to wait till, you know, maybe a couple more weeks, but Mr. Moore can elaborate.
Yes. Thank you. Actually, that was a very good answer, to be honest with you. What we typically do is we'll wait. We do monitor the leaves. We do see some of the derbis or the, excuse me, the debris on the catch basins. So, we are aware of that, but the city manager is correct. We try to time it with when all the leaves are falling, but we do have a lot of staff that will canvass. It is part of our fall maintenance to where we go through the neighborhoods. We do canvass and start to clear off all those areas. We ask residents if they have the ability to do that. We'd appreciate that. That would definitely speed up the process, but our team does come through. Not only part of our, I don't want to get too far in the weeds here, but we do have a team that goes...
Leaves.
We do have a team that does go and do that, but also, so long as the temperatures aren't freezing, our street sweepers will go out, hit those curb lines and get all those leaves off of those catch basins and out of the gutter, too, so long as it's not freezing.
Just a follow-up. Is that, I'm sorry, through the chair to Mr. Moore?
Uh, yeah.
Go ahead. So, is it done specifically by street sweepers? Or you say you've got crews going out. Will they, they just pick up with a shovel or how do, how do they go about doing it?
So, we do both. So, depending the temperature, we do have our routes for street sweepers. We do five rotations throughout the city. And so long as, I seen them out the other day, so long as it's not freezing, the street sweepers go out and that's their primary objective right now. If it's too cold, those areas are identified that it was too cold for the sweepers, so we can send crews back out to get those leaves off the catch basin. But one way or the other, they'll be cleaned off.
Very good. That's all I have. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Yenness. Counsel, anyone else?
Mayor Taylor, thank you. Through the chair to Mr. Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool, do you have a tentative date for Utica Road to be opened? Please make it soon.
Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselwoman Schmidt, yes, I know everyone's anxious. This is a county road project, not to blame the county. It is on schedule. It's going to be completed by the end of December. That was the latest estimate. Now, I don't know that it's changed in the last few days, but I believe they're on target to have it completed by the end of December.
Perfect. And how about 14 mile between Van Dyke and Maple Lane? It's got one coat, I mean, two lanes are complete, but there's still two lanes that have the manhole covers that are two inches above the asphalt.
That, too, is scheduled to be done by the end of the year. The asphalt plans close, you know, shortly after the first year. Sometimes they can stay open a little longer. So, that's a goal, to get all these projects done by the end of the year. Some may spill a few weeks into January, but that's the goal.
Okay. Thank you. Other than that, I want to wish from my family to everyone out there a very, very happy Thanksgiving. Safe and blessed holiday with family and friends. And don't eat too much turkey. Go Lions. And Black Friday, be safe. Nothing further.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Counsel, anyone else? Mrs. Zarowski.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Well, you did kind of start off on what I was going to say, but I did want to also, the weather, so, to the residents, the weather is changing. It's getting a lot colder and it's also getting very slippery. And there, there's going to be some black ice. Like today, I slipped coming out of work because it was, even though it was 30 something, something degrees, the ground was starting to get cold and it's starting to snow. So, please, I just want to remind the residents as, you know, the person that takes care of people that fall and get hurt, please watch your step. Please make sure that if there's a lot of salt even on areas and surfaces, that you're not slipping on the salt. So, just be careful and mind yourself and maybe not wear the high heels, ladies, if you don't have to, because it's safer with a little bit less heel and a little more surface on the ground. And then again, also, as Mrs. Schmidt said, from my family to yours, my four sons, the two wives, one granddaughter and my great wonderful doggy and my husband, I have to remember him, we wish you a very happy Thanksgiving and is, again, also, go Lions as well. So, thank you very much, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Zarowski. Counsel, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Well, briefly, after that frustrating Lions game on Monday, I have to say go Lions and happy Thanksgiving to everyone at home. Just a quick couple of things. I've previously spoken with the city manager about this, but we are enacting Project Zero in Sterling Heights to prevent pedestrian and car fatalities and serious accidents. And I was hoping that, without objection, we could kind of change how these accidents are reported to council. I'd like to see an after-accident report. Now, why did this pedestrian or this car accident that was severe happen? And what, if any, changes could we make to hopefully prevent it? You know, if, say, for example, I'm just going to make something up here because I don't have a perfect example in front of me, 18-mile road at Van Dyke, if cars are constantly turning into the crosswalk and striking residents, maybe we should make it a no turn on red. That would, that would prevent that condition. And I think that right now, we hear about these accidents and we're nowhere close to Project Zero at this point. But I think a little bit more information to council from these accidents might be able to help us, look, not everyone's going to solve it, but it might be able to help us try to create a better situation for our pedestrians and try to reach our goals. So, without objection, I'd ask the city council, the city manager to start putting that into our packets when these things happen.
Counsel, any thoughts?
There you go. Excellent. And then, the other thing I want to talk about as part of this is, you know, we have an awesome engineering staff here, led by Mr. Bayshaw, and they do a lot. I think that they're actually undersized. And the one thing we don't have is a traffic engineer in the city. And I think we really need to think about this, because we're talking about engineering streets to be safer for both pedestrians and cars. It would be helpful to have some staff support there, because while Mr. Bayshaw would say that he's an engineer of all sorts, you know, having someone who's with specialized knowledge in this area might make streets safer and pathways safer and incorporate our residents more in the designs. So, I think that when we come, start thinking about strategic planning and next year's budget, we should really start thinking about ways that we could possibly beef that up, because we've now given to Mr. Bayshaw Project Zero, but we should give him some support, which maybe is someone who's, who's engineering training is in making streets safer. So, I don't have any, anything that I want to suggest at that, at this point, but I think we should start thinking about that as a council and in the budget process, because I think he would appreciate it, because, for example, when I was first elected, there was no standard, I actually asked this, there was no standard for crosswalks in the city, for, you know, just how a crosswalk looked, how it appears, how signage is located. And this was shocking to me, because we had crosswalks that looked all different ways throughout the community. I think if we had a traffic engineer or someone on point to standardize this, that might make our community safer. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Radke.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Anyone else? Okay. First and foremost, I want to welcome Rob Majak to the city council.
Thank you, Mayor.
It's, I was not able to be here at the swearing-in ceremony, unfortunately, so it's my first official meeting. I guess it's the first official, official city council meeting having you. So, welcome aboard. We're excited...
Thank you.
...to have your leadership here. We know you have a long history of serving the residents of Sterling Heights. Now, you get to represent some of us Eastsiders, too. So, we're excited to have you, Rob.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard. I also want to say, happy Thanksgiving to everybody out there. I hope you all enjoy your, your day with family. One final note, I would like to ask, I don't generally do this, but I would like to ask if there's no objection from the city council. I would like to get a better understanding of the, of our police department and how they, how we partner with the federal government. I know we have task force. I know that we work with the DEA and the FBI and we have official partnerships where there's officers on loan and back and forth. I'd like to, what are, what are all the programs, task forces, et cetera, that the City of Sterling Heights Police Department is involved in that are in partnership with FBI, Department of Justice, any federal agency? I'd like to understand how these partnerships came about, how long they've been in place. And I'd like to have some analysis of the cost and the benefit and benefit both from the city standpoint and the federal government standpoint. What are, what are, what are we doing with these partnerships? And it seems like they've come, they've come about over a period of many years, but I don't have a firm understanding of which, what they are right now, what the long-term outlook has been on them, how effective they've been and what tangible results that we can point to. So, I don't need, I don't, I don't know if that's very clear or not. I'm happy to work with, with you, you know, to make it clear if I can. And I don't necessarily think that this needs to be done at the next council meeting. Something like 60 to 90 days would, would probably be good enough. For me, counsel, any objection to that?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Yenness.
I have, I have no objection. I'm just as curious as you are, that you bring it up. But I'm, I am curious as to what, if, what the genesis of your either concern or thoughts are, is it just out of curiosity or do you think there's a problem that you're...
It's not just, it's not just out of curiosity. And I hesitate. I don't want to step into some pile that I can't get myself out of. But I'm very, I'm very troubled by what I see out of the federal government right now. It's, it's distressing, okay? Particularly in regards to law enforcement. You know, I know that we have partnerships with the, with the DEA, for example, or the FBI, and I know we have dedicated officers working their butts off, putting themselves in harm's way to interdict drugs. And then we have federal partners that are literally murdering people with complete impunity, okay? Blasting drug boats, drug boats in the Caribbean, without providing any evidence of it. And I feel compelled to say, if we're going to be a part, if we're going to use our resources to be a part of this administration's assault on traditional American values, you don't just kill somebody because you think they're doing something wrong. We're not at war. If you think they're doing something wrong, you arrest them, you put them on trial, you give them a day in court. And so, I'm frustrated by what I see coming out of, out of the federal government right now, particularly with regard to law enforcement. And that's not even, that's not even going into what's coming out of ICE, which is one of the most troubling things that I've seen in my entire lifetime. So, I want to understand how we're partnering with the federal government, particularly policing agencies, the Department of Justice, and, and better understand whether the priorities that this city council has set through our, you know, being a welcoming city, being a city that is inclusive of people, whether those values are aligned with our values. And, and better, I don't think they are aligned, you know, but I think that it'll be interesting to see what is the, what is the benefit that our residents are receiving by being a part of these partnerships to better determine whether it's worth continuing them. So, that's, that's how I feel.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Well said. Just well said. That's all I have to say, Mayor. Well said.
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else? With no further discussion, I would entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session.
So, move.
Support. All right. It's been moved and supported. Ms. Riska, can we please have a roll call vote?
Mr. Majak?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Yes.
Zarowski?
Yes.
Yes.
Yenness?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries 7-0. We will be adjourned into closed session. We will not be returning. So, this concludes the public portion of our meeting tonight. Thank you all for attending.